For you, our work session agenda. It's very full, lot of important work before us. And we just pray that we would always, always seek to serve our children first in all that we say and that we do in our role. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
May I interrupt before we start? Have you had any school damage? Have you heard anything until we've been blessed?
Not that we know of.
Right.
No, so far.
Okay, good.
Great.
That's wonderful.
So, Dr. Mackey, I'll let you take the lead.
Okay, well, the first three things you see are, again, approval of Ed Crep programs. First one's West Alabama. I said, "West Alabama folks are here." You want to come. Dr. Miller, you've gotten so good about this, you have had to come to the table and then bring them with you. And I don't know if you want to try to bring all of, all three together, or just one at a time?
One at a time.
I think it'd be fine, it's up to you.
It'll be one at a time, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Dr. Mackey, and good morning to everyone.
Good morning.
Today, we have University of West Alabama with us, sir. So, if they don't mind, I'd like them to come to the table. We have Dr. Miller and Dr. Rogers.
Good morning. We appreciate y'all coming all this way to go, ma'am, if you're with us. How long was the drive?
It's not too bad, about two and a half hours. But we had a great visit. You know, it's, it flies by. It's a good straight shot.
Okay.
Please, sir.
All right, so I'm going to just let you know that we had another fabulous visit. University of West Alabama is really doing some wonderful things. And without getting further, you're going to turn it over to Dr. Miller and Dr. Rogers.
Thank you guys very much. We are happy to answer any questions you may have about our programs. I thought we'd be a little proactive and thought you might ask about program enrollment, current graduates, some innovations, and things we're doing. So, just this one pager front and back captures our current enrollment by program. And then we have our completers, you know, for this past school year. Obviously, our focus has been on trying to prepare, you know, more math and science, more special ed. Our biggest initiative and the highest numbers most recently are in elementary education. So, you can see the numbers there by program. You probably already know that we offer programs on campus and online. We're doing a lot with our partnership schools, particularly in the online. We have a program that we call from A to T, from assistant to teacher. So, we're working with their professionals. So, a lot of these elementary numbers that you see, these are, you know, pair of pros that are in the classroom. We're working with the superintendents for those field experiences so that they can come out of their classroom, go see opportunities at other grade levels. So, that program has really taken off. You can also see by our Alt-A numbers, these are the people that have a BS degree, and they're working on a master's. Those people can go into the classroom and be mentored. Again, we're proud of our numbers. You can see, again, elementary ed is our largest program. But we're happy to note the secondary areas have also grown, math, science, English, language arts, and history. So, you can see those, as well as our Class A and our specialist numbers there. Another program that I'd like to highlight would be instructional leadership. We do the reduced our option as long as, as well as the full program. And most of these candidates are online candidates. So, those are just highlight current numbers. If you have any questions about that, happy, happy to answer. Of course, you can, I thought you might, would like to see our completers as well. That's important, not only enrollment, but those that do complete. And then on the back, I just thought I would just highlight, not talking about each of these programs, but we do have a lot of initiatives in the College of Education. And really, the three main things we look at when we talk about innovation in the College of Ed, we're really trying to do three things. The first is, how can we help offset a lot of first-generation students with scholarship dollars? So, a lot of our grants come in the way of scholarship dollars to our students. Secondly, we try to see, what can we do to help our partnership schools? We currently run a program that we call Teacher Connect. And through that Teacher Connect, we offer our school districts service through professional development. We give their employees a scholarship. We do professional development, we write grants. And so, we have over 200 Teacher Connect partnerships right now in the district. Because we are aggressively online, you know, we're proud of the people that went through the Teach for America program. We, though, say, "Let us do Teach for Alabama." Let us, you know, and so through some funding through the legislators, we're able to expand those dollars and give great scholarships to our online students and our campus students. It started out first in the Black Belt region, and we were seeing some good success. But we went back and asked for additional dollars and said, "Teach for Alabama." And so, currently, we do have a future teacher in every county in the state of Alabama. So, we're excited, you know, about that. And, of course, we'd like to see that grow. But the third thing is, I've mentioned the scholarship dollars, the PK-12 partnership, and then professional development. We really believe in, with the STEM Institute, with all of our grants, we want to support our school leaders and our schools with professional development. So, when we look for initiatives, those are things we're looking for. Certainly, we're proud of our NACI accreditation that we recently obtained. K-Crap with our counseling program was just obtained, and we're super excited about that. And in this fall, we'll be launching our first apprenticeship. So, we're working with the Office of the Apprenticeship as well as the Early Childhood. So, we'll be launching secondary apprenticeships as well as elementary. And then through the Office of Early Childhood, we'll be doing early childhood apprenticeships. So, that's sort of a snapshot of who we are and kind of what we're doing. So, happy to answer any questions you guys have about the program. Of course, we enjoyed going through the process of program improvement, working with the State Department. It really made us take a deep dive into each of our programs and looking at our data, what's working, what's not. We appreciate y'all's help bringing Barksdale in. We knew we had a gap in our early childhood and elementary in our spin program with reading. Through going through that process, we were able to see gaps and, you know, what courses need to be updated. We weren't really focused on the science of reading like we needed to. Now we are. And, of course, we're getting better every day. So, we do appreciate that help and working on math as we speak.
That was something that going to be my only question is, are you starting to really have conversations around numeracye, around mathematics?
We really are. Our department chairperson, she has been so fortunate to work at the state level on various committees in mathematics. That is her strength. She teaches our Math Methods class, so she's really leading that initiative. And I couldn't be prouder of the direction we're headed. We know we're going to, we already have 12 hours of math in our program, but we do know that we're going to have to make some adjustments and make things a little stronger. We're looking at our test data, our practice scores, and, you know, we do definitely see some gaps and some things we can do better.
Oh, she was that fun.
Already, you supposed to watch this before.
I just know if I'm in your shoes, this is what I wanted to say.
Dr. Miller, how many years have you been the dean?
I've been the dean, I started as dean of online 10 years ago. I've been the College of Ed dean eight years.
I think, I absolutely, you know, don't ask the question, don't know the answer to it. Because that consistency has meant a lot. And I know that, you know, institutions, deans change and retire and move. But you have been coming and doing this work and attending board meetings for a long time. And I do think it helps you understand
It does.
what, what we're looking for.
Certainly does. Yeah, absolutely. We appreciate you guys. We couldn't do what we, you know, need to do without your help. State Department representatives, I mean, I've got them on speed dial. They take a call, they call us back, they text us back. So, you know, if there's ever a situation, we're just not 100% sure, you know, it's great to know you've got a relationship, that you don't have to be afraid to call to say, you know, "Uh-oh, we did this. We can fix this," you know, or "We want to celebrate this. We want you to know the good news." And so, they are just, they make our job a lot easier. So, I did want to say thank you and, you know, give you that praise of the Lord.
We all appreciate you preparing us and the thought of you producing at West Alabama.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We did bring you guys some little freebies. They're just little freebies.
We love freebies.
Okay, we'll get you some freebies.
As I say, they transition. Let me mention also that, so these, you see that these, all three of these are long. Now, the one that's Dr. Tom, University of Alabama, is about four pages. Because they, this is that kind of regular review of lots of programs. We have re-reviewed everything, as you know, under the new standards. And so, you will not see, you know, you won't see UWA and Alabama coming every month with a four-page list of programs to review. Because this will probably be seven years, it's a big review. And then most of the programs will be approved, and you'll see just small pieces then from these executions. The same one you approved this morning, those, the ones from Alabama A&amp;M and UAH were both more than two pages long. So, they're submitting the bulk of their programs at one time. And we'll probably be going through this for a little time, and then we'll kind of, they'll be on, I want to say, it's not autopilot, certainly not autopilot, but deans are certification officers, is it? But it's that they know this part's done, and they move on with the next part.
This is West.
Yes, sir.
I'm a typical open on Christmas. This is really neat, Paki. This is my time of year.
We're so glad you're
Now it's time to listen to the work.
I just want to say, you know me, I feel opened up. Thank them, and I know what to thank them for.
We're glad we put it, we're so glad we put a smile on your face today.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, good morning again. Now, we have University of Alabama with us. We also had a great visit there. This morning, we have Dr. Emily Sims here to tell us more about the programs and about the visit at the University of Alabama. Dr. Sims.
Let me start with this. Your gifts are in the mail, it's so big. You're a lot of good things to go home. Secondly, let me just mention that. So, my friend over here, David Crowe, starts out with, after Dr. Miller presents his amazing presentation, he says, "Good luck with that."
Hey, let me hear my card to make sure you got it right.
Thank you so much for having us. And let me just begin with, I think, providing a little context. So, I'm finishing my third year at the University of Alabama as certification officer and associate dean. And prior to that, I was at a regional institution. And I have appreciated so much in the state of Alabama to be able to see the difference between a regional institution and R1. And what I've realized is the challenges are the same. They're just bigger. And the goals are still the same. So, there's, we have a lot of things similar, it's just at a larger scale. So, it's been really interesting to see that. One of the things, as you see, we have many more programs at the University of Alabama. And one of the charges when I first started here was to go through, because literally, we have a binder this thick with all the programs. And what I charged the departments to look at is to look at the programs that are producing and those that are not, having programs just to have programs because we say they have. I mean, that's, that's a lot of work. We still have to submit programs for review if there's no enrollment, there's no completion. That's not the fruits of our labor. So, we challenged them to do that. And we did that with some programs and realized, you know, we could take these resources we're putting into non-producing programs and put our resources into those programs that are producing. So, that was a really exciting part of it, that departments really got in there and dug into the data to look at, you know, "Oh, I did not realize over five years." And we looked, we're looking at trends. You know, we can kind of chalk it, you know, COVID is an anomaly, that this is, you know, we understand why there was a dive there. And we began to look at our trends over the past five years. And I'm primarily going to be talking about initial certification programs because I think right now, we're really interested in producing teachers that we can put in the bill right now. So, with our, with our Alt-A programs and our Class B programs, over the past five years, we've, we've looked at the numbers. And 2018, 19, Title II reporting year, we realized, you know, we're doing well. But then we began to dive. And definitely COVID over the last two years, 2021, we began to see also another dive. We are just now seeing an incline to the point where we're just getting back over our 20% loss. So, it's very interesting to see that. And the interesting thing about it, it's not been one program, it's been across the board. So, we realized it is not an issue with a program, it's an issue with the profession right now with recruiting into it. We actually have hired a, within, since I've been here, within three years, we have a student success person who is responsible for looking at retention, which I think is really interesting because what he's finding out is that we are losing students coming out of our teacher ed, but we're also gaining them from other programs. So, it's been a watch. So, what we want to do is like find out why we're losing them, continue to receive those that are coming to us for various reasons, but find out why they're leaving. And so, that is part of what his work is. And so, I'll talk to you more about that in just a little bit. But just, you know, we are recognizing trends, and we're doing things to kind of address that. What was really, you know, disappointing and kind of hurt my heart a little bit when I began to look at the math and science, over the past five years for science, I want you to think about this for a minute. Since 2018 to 2023, the last reporting year for Title II, we have had 11, total 11. This is the University of Alabama, large institution, 11 science education initial cert in five years. And, and here's when we realized that. When we gave a look at our programs, do you know what was that? It was 146-hour program.
Yeah.
So, what we challenged these science faculty to do is go back and look at, you know, part of this is because of the University of Alabama, they were still doing the academic major. So, whatever was required for the chemistry major was required for the chemistry education major. And so, whenever the rule changed where we could just, you know, have an academic major 3018, didn't have to actually mirror the university's major, the programs began to look and say, "What can we do here?" At the same time, not trying to compromise their preparation for practice exams, a TPA, all those things. And so, they had dialogue with the arts and science faculty, which was a great thing. I think that's how we did make this work, especially with secondary. You have to have this dialogue, they have to know what they are. And so, that has been great. Matter of fact, somebody may be familiar with our innovative program, with our accelerated masters programs in math. Our science education faculty is so passionate about this, he's really wanting to do this. Basically, what that is, just to familiarize yourself with what this is, is they receive a, they, they're coming in as, you know, freshmen possibly, and they're going into what we call accelerated masters programs. They're seeking a math degree, math, math education, for example. And they complete all the coursework to receive this. They never receive a Class B certification because while they're receiving that, they're going on to meet the requirements to get this master, an accelerated master. So, they end the program with a Class A. So, they never see a B, they go straight to the A. So, it's been a really productive, I think, a really effective program. So, the science has talked with the math faculty and said, "You know, I want some of that." So, they've had this conversation, and during our meeting in the 24th, we're actually going to be talking about that. So, this innovative program with science, we've got some really great, dynamic science faculty that are ready to get on this. And I think it's really exciting. So, there's lots of collaboration going on, so I think we're going to address that. Just to make you aware of this, our science, or excuse me, the math, over the past five years, we've had 29 initial cert completers over that five-year period. But go ahead and expect this, there's going to be a dip in that, okay? Because what happened is, we had a big cohort in 2020, actually COVID year because they had to come out of their placement. But those were folks who were doing the Alt-A route. But because we now have this AMP, this accelerated masters, they're being tracked that way. And the great thing about this is, those students in those programs are meeting rigor like 3.7 GPA, this is University of Alabama AMP requirement. So, they're up here as far as their content knowledge. And so, that's been exciting, that we're going to be producing these high-calving teachers with this Numeracy Act coming into play. I think this is going to be critical. So, those are things, because of collaboration, because of us digging deep into the data saying, "I know you think this, but here's what it really is." And then the numbers are the numbers, right? They tell a story. And so, they've been really open to that, and I've been really appreciative of the opportunity to collaborate there. We have so many programs. If I can talk to you a minute about this, this is, we just got this hot-off-the-press memo on April 29th about where we are with Barksdale. And to give you a little bit of history on that, like, I have not really been part of the Barksdale review part of our previous dean. I'm in my third year and I'm a third dean. I'm not taking this personally, I'm trying to take it personally. But I'm a third dean, and she just came from Texas A&amp;M in January. So, she's still turning, learning all the roots, and hopefully, she trusted me to kind of be here to represent us. So, the Barksdale report was being facilitated by people primarily that are no longer here, retirement, things like that happen. So, we had one faculty member that was critical in this role. And I've kind of reached out to her to kind of get feedback on that, to really fast-track me on, school me on what was going on here, where we are with this. And I'm really excited to say that right now, we are moving, making movements. And I really appreciate the fact, you know, I've heard lots of back and forth about this Barksdale criticism on that, whatever it might be. The reality is, accountability is good. And I think that's what it causes to be, is accountable for what we're doing. And as Dr. Miller said, we're also reporting, like, you know what? We could be doing better. So, we went back and looked at the science of reading, coursework, things we're doing. We, I actually have data based on the teach reading practices as opposed to the foundation of reading. And we thought it was a test, it's not the test, it's the preparation for it. So, it's caused us to kind of look back at coursework, you know, the textbook. I know that's one of the concerns that the review had about the textbook. We have not, I think it was actually in a course syllabus as an optional, but we literally have like pulled it out now because of the, you know, three-Qing that it kind of, it was leaning towards. So, we are responding to all those things. We are, you know, boots on the ground, we're realizing, you know, the need to collaborate with that, we're not islands. Early childhood's not different than elementary and collaborative special education. We're all in this together, it's all the science of reading. And then it just helps our programs and helps our, at the end of the day, the schools, the students who are teaching in the elementary, special ed, and early childhood programs. So, another thing we're doing is, we have this Teach, Teaching Bama is what we're calling it, this, again, student success director that we have. He has already secured two systems, two systems, Dr. Window? Right now, we're collaborating with schools, teachers, actually, students who are in schools who have interest in being, becoming a teacher. And the response, like, we're saying, "You put money here, school system, Alabama's putting money here, too." So, we're kind of jointly saying, you know, and we want to keep them in the system. So, part of the agreement is, with the funding comes like you got to stay in Alabama. So, the challenge I'm seeing with Alabama, the University of Alabama and a regional institution is we have 65% out-of-state students. So, guess what happens after we prepare them? And I have really been burdened with this, I'll be honest with you, that we are spending all this energy, time, and I, yes, when we look at the big picture, we're preparing young people, but we're not helping our state. They're going back to their states. And that's, you know, it's a great thing, they're still staying in education, but like, I'm here to help our state. We have needs, too. So, the great thing is, I think things like this Teaching Bama could say, "Hey, you know, I've been teaching here a year, you know, nine more years, I bet." So, it is kind of like a character angle for them. But then we're also realizing, Dr. Window does our Office of Clinical Experience placements, and she has wonderful relationships with our school system. So, she's realized if she can get them into a cool system, get them a taste of what this is like, they love it and they stay here. So, we've had that happen, too. So, lots of great things happening, trying to figure out like what are ways to kind of recruit them? And not just, we're not just interested in, in my opinion, like, we can't just be worried about restitution. I was telling Dr. Miller, there's enough for everybody, that's right. There's no reason to compete, there's enough for everybody. But we want to keep them in the state of Alabama. And then not only that, we want to keep them in the profession. So, I think that's kind of what the challenge we're at right now. I'm happy to kind of answer any questions because I know right now with the Numeracy Act and science of reading, you know, there might be questions about that. But just so you know, we're on it. We've got some, a learning curve because we've got some new faculty, of course, new administration are being schooled on that. And right now, I think there's, if there's anything else, want to mention, I think that's it.
So, with the Barksdale report, and you said the focusing back on accountability and the science of reading and such, so are you looking, or have you looked at the textbooks that are being used to teach potential teachers?
Yes, ma'am.
So, that is one of your priorities?
And I will tell you that the textbook that was a question saying, you know, this needs to be, you know, not part of the program. It was, the faculty just texted me this morning, "Please let them know we have removed that."
Yeah, there we go.
Yes, so we are responding, and it is, it is not, and I will tell you this, and I think this makes me feel better about my work, too. We're not about compliance, we totally are about continuous improvement. So, this is not, we're not doing that just because we said so. We do this because we know it's the right thing to do. So, I want you to know that. We literally are trying to dig deep into, you know, why the things are happening and understanding that. And so, that is in a response to, "Yep, that's right, we should remove this." And so, we have. Thank you.
Just pardon me, you said 65% of your educational students are out of state?
Across enrollment of the University of Alabama, yes, sir.
What about your department?
It mirrors that. It mirrors that.
Would that imply, how many did you credential on the last credentialing period?
Initial certification? We had 192.
192.
192. Yes, across all initial cert programs.
I do appreciate your presentation, and I will say, of all the deans, you're the fastest-talking.
It's hard to take notes. Is that a compliment or a present?
I say, you're the fastest speaking, and then Alabama, that speed seems to be something important at Alabama. And my Auburn dean back there is laughing. Dean knows laughing, Auburn.
That's all right, I graduated 225, so I have a big old mouth.
Yes, ma'am, it is a compliment, thank you. You've covered a lot of material.
Yes, thank you. That's very encouraging. After today and last night, I'm very encouraged. I've been to several graduate, well, pre-graduation recognition ceremonies. And the seniors were asked, or they, they either said it themselves, or they, someone announced it for them, what they were, what their major would be, where they're going to school. And I didn't hear one teacher. And it was very disturbing to me, and some, some of them, actually, I forget the number, come from parents, you know, the parents are either teachers, one of them. And so, so this is encouraging that you're recruiting, and it was encouraging to see the young, the students today. But, yes, and then if we send them all out of state, I appreciate the work in that area.
Yes, we are, we are aware that is happening, and we're trying to start this early on. So, you can make a career here in state of Alabama. And we have many of them that not only stay here, they bring their families and they move here.
Right. We need to be proactive, not reactive. This is something on my niece right now, she is actually at the University of Alabama in the teacher ed program. She's in one of the schools in Tuscaloosa, she's from Norfolk. And she's talking about moving to another state, another southern state that's a little north. And we're pulling your back. So, hopefully, she'll stay. She has a great offer, the staff is encouraging her, and that, so all of that together, I think, will make a really positive, a big positive difference. So, it was, it's been somewhat discouraging until last night and today. And so, I appreciate your presentations.
Well, to share this little tidbit with you, too, I'm renewing my National War certification, so I think that, don't receive any extra benefit as a hiring staff, but I believe in the process. She was part of my initial cert process. And so, I'm renewing it for probably the last time, this is the third time I renew this. So, I was actually in a classroom. And so, this was to show you how life comes full circle. A classroom teaching on Monday in a school that was actually my classroom I taught in when I was teaching. So, the encouraging part was, these are ninth graders, ninth grade English. I'd asked the students, "How many of you are thinking about going in the teaching profession?" And there were 24 students in there, and seven students raised their hands. And that's great. And so, I left that teacher letting them know, like, we've got to continue to provide positive experiences for them. Because what we've realized, when we ask our students who are in our programs, "Why do you want to become teachers?", they always point back to a teacher.
Exactly.
Nobody ever says, you know, for all these other reasons, it really is because this is the way I've done it in my life, I want to be that person that the students like. So, we, we really have all the power, classroom teachers have all the power to recruit in the profession. So, that's what we want to provide, and we tell Dr. Window all the time, like, put them in good places because that's what's going to help, you know, reproduce this. They want to see, you know, what real teaching is. At the same time, we don't try to, you know, hide them from the realities because that doesn't help them either. It's a hard job. It's a hard job.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you for being with us today. Safe travels, back to us.
Your gifts are in the mail.
And she did a very good job.
Alabama State University.
Alabama State University.
Yes. So our last institution, last but not least, absolutely, we have with us today is Alabama State University and we have Dr. Robin and Dr. Mohammed. They're going to tell you more about the program at Alabama State. Thank you.
So glad to have you, buddy.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Anthony Broton. I have the honor and privilege to stand in the place of Dr. Nicole Strange Martin, the dean of the College of Education. I've been associate dean for one and a half years and I'm very ecstatic for the opportunity to be here at Alabama. I'm a former kindergarten first grade teacher. So I came to Alabama really excited about our quality assurance, a short system. We have just implemented watermark. We are, we have migrated from TK 20. So we wanted to enhance our quality assurance system to ensure that our data is precise and that we are ongoingly tracking our student performance. Regarding the Sparksdale, we have really, really addressed all of the concerns. We have revised our course syllabi. We've also vetted the textbooks to ensure that the textbooks reflect current trends in the field, that they have been vetted by national professional organizations regarding literacy. We have developed a literacy and reading committee which meets once a month. And they are always, they are always evaluating the program to ensure that the faculty have the competencies embedded in the coursework. We've also engaged in faculty, faculty competency development because we want our faculty to always be engaged in professional development, workforce competencies and developing our students to be passionate. Encouraging them by engaging our students in quality schools. We've engaged in bus tours. We took our students to enterprise. And so we've been taking them to different, different schools and districts to kind of empower them, to remind them of their commitment so that when they're in the classes, they understand that they have a commitment to go serve our children. So the quality assurance system is multi-sectional. We've also embedded a student advisory council because we know that there are many trends that we don't see that they see. So we are always having our student, our current undergraduate students and our graduates in conversations as well as our partners to ensure that we are meeting the trends, meeting the market demands and that we are really preparing them with the competencies that they need. We've also engaged in practice preparation. We know that practice is a huge issue. I recall as an undergraduate, practice was a challenge because I had anxiety. But once I received that necessary support, I had the confidence and I exceeded expectations regarding scores. So we've partnered with Edforce and also we've had some graduates come in who are exceptional teachers to provide that support for our students. So we hope to bolster our enrollment numbers and our program completion. Our recent completion numbers were 19 as of last year and we are working to bolster those numbers. We have outside consultants who are coming in to provide professional development for our students because we want them to have those skills necessary to really respond to the demands in the field. Last but not least, we have campus tours. We have a lot of children, elementary children, who come to our campus for visits at the university. So the college of ed has been very strategic to kind of lure them into the college of education. So those children were exposed to our undergraduate students, teaching mock lessons in class. And so we're able to really pour into the future of education. So when they leave, they say, you know, they want to be teachers. So we really, really work to maximize our resources, galvanize our partners, galvanize our dynamic alumni. So when I first got to Alabama, the first people I've interfaced with were alumni from Alabama State University. And most of them are educators, superintendents. They are principals and I have been empowered personally to ensure that our quality assurance system works. And I'm very proud of the progress that the college has made. In my one and a half years at Alabama State University, I've seen the quality of our undergraduate students enhanced. And I think it's because we've taken a multi-part approach to provide robust experiences for them while at the same time empowering our faculty members. We know that there are so many conversations and discourse in society regarding the teacher shortage, but we don't believe that there's a shortage. We believe that the quality is there. We just need to lure them in. We have students who are excited about becoming teachers. And so we have to tap into the talent that's already here in Alabama. And we have Dr. Mohammed here who's, who's also a literacy professor. He's been working hard on our literacy, our literacy committee to ensure that they are meeting monthly and to ensure that all the revisions are taking place.
Yes, we definitely do, as Dr. Broton was saying, we meet on the first Thursdays to try to go over those recommendations from the Sparksdale report. With that being said, we've already reconstructed our syllabi to make sure that it addresses the different branches of science of reading. Along with that, we've collaborated with other universities to kind of see exactly what are their course offerings and some of their practices to see if we can kind of streamline our curriculum and try to make, you know, our students have the best preparation possible. Another thing that we do in connection of working with Amy Jones, we also go out to different symposiums. I attended, it was one symposium out in Penn Lala Elementary School right here in Montgomery. And they introduced faculty that are actually implementing science of reading practices already. So we go to different sites like that to try to see how it's being done in the classroom. Because it's one thing to kind of hear about it, but it's another thing to see it in practice. So we're, we're doing things like that so we can just offer our students the best experience.
And we have a unique opportunity of hosting regional professional development opportunities. So teachers and schools from across the regions have came to Alabama State University. And our faculty and students have actually also been exposed to the letters training. So we hold that unique opportunity to actually host those regional professional developments for our school districts as well. So I'm happy to entertain any questions. I will do my best to respond as if Dr. Strange Martin was here.
So do you have any bumps in the road that when you talk with your literacy committee? Or, I mean, do you see things moving forward? I mean, are there any major hurdles that you're seeing with this new, not new, the implementation of your Sparksdale report?
No, it's, it's not any major hurdles. It's, it's just a matter of ascertaining the information so we can figure out the best route to get it done. But the hurdles are, the only, I would say, if it is an impediment, it's, it's just merely just organizing the information. Other than that, we were able to move forward. Once we know exactly what to do, we're able to do it.
Right. And I always ask this question, do you view your textbooks to make sure that they actually do focus on the science of reading and not the, and eliminate that three cuing? So you are aware of that?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We, we definitely do that. That was a, definitely a part of realigning the syllabi as well.
That's what I was hoping you were going to say.
Yeah, textbook selection. Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Great presentation. Thank you very much.
Very happy.
I was excited to hear that you all got a chance to visit Penn Lala. One of our readings, Spotlight School, one of the best kept secrets in Montgomery. I had an opportunity to go and visit that site for the very same reason. So to see the collaboration between what you're doing in higher ed and the actual practical experiences. Encouraging.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. They have a great story. They, you know, they started thinking they were failing or they was at the end. They turned it up completely around with the science of reading practices.
Right.
Excellent, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you. That is another Alabama state color tie, isn't it? I wouldn't have recognized that. That's important.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank y'all for being with us. Board members, if it's all right with you, we're going to break now for lunch. I believe it's that time and they're prepared for us. So we're going to come back at 20 minutes after 12. We'll have a quick lunch and be back because we have a really busy afternoon work session. Thank you so much.
aggressive and they can't be done but this timeline says we will have these standards in place by June 30th. And of course, as you know, it takes a long time to make them official. So what I proposed was that if the board agrees and feels good about them, we go ahead and make them an emergency rule in June, which tells our colleges these are the standards we're planning on using and they can go ahead and start planning for this fall. And then they would be on the table for 45 days. We could vote to make them official in August and then they would go in place right after the, you know, the permanent rule would go in place in September. But I think that we don't have to make it an emergency rule. But I think that we don't have to make it an emergency rule. But I think it shows good faith of the legislature that we're doing what we can to make sure we get all the timelines as they've laid them out. And it helps our colleges know that, you know, we are, this is our commitment is that these are going to be in place this year so they can be planned. There are, so if we think about that, then instead of looking at four things, we're really looking at two things. One of them is establishing the courses. So there are four courses that have to be established under the Numeracy Act for the colleges to teach. Dr. Miller this morning told you, they already have four courses, but they're going to have to realign those courses based on what the board's action is with this. And then the other rule is setting standards for the new Foundations of Mathematics test. So you know, we have a Foundations of Reading test. The Numeracy Act, and kind of mimicking that, the Literacy Act said, and we want the board to adopt the Foundations of Mathematics test. The problem is no such test exists. The Foundations of Reading test was already out there. And we just did an RFP and we adopted and we set the cut score. And actually in my report, and we'll come back to that and talk about the first administration of that. But for mathematics, for numeracy, we will have to do an RFP and pick a vendor to develop a foundations test. Because no such test exists anywhere in the country. We can't develop a test without standards to base the test on. So the other rule is about establishing the standards for which that test will be based on.
Okay, so the first, I got sort of, you said the first part is establishing the standards? No, not.
The first rule is establishing the four courses that the colleges have to teach. It's basically the standards, for coaching endorsement. The four courses for coaching endorsement, math course coaching endorsement.
Say that four times.
And then the other rule is establishing standards for colleges of ed on which we can base the Foundations of Mathematics test. Now the really technical stuff, Dr. Anderson will be able to explain much deeper than.
Before she goes on, if you don't mind. So you said we're going to have to do the RFP to find a vendor to develop this test.
That's right.
Can, did you, before I interrupt you, and I'm sorry, how, what's the timeframe on that? I know that's not an easy thing.
Yeah, there's not a timeframe necessarily, but once we get the standards adopted, then we want to release the RFP. Like they're already working on the RFP and we will get it out within days or weeks after we get the standards in place.
And then how long will it be to develop that test?
Yes, that's going to be a while. That's because you talk about developing a whole new test, Siobhan, you look like you're trying to talk.
Oh, no, I was just going to say, we've, we've kind of done a little looking around already with some testing vendors. And so there's some who have some components of it, so hopefully it won't take so long.
To develop, actually develop the talent.
We would think we'd have responses by the end of '24. We'll go through the award process. Of course, as you know, that means it goes back to Legislative Review Committee. The governor has to sign it, so it's, I would say we would be this time next year before we would begin. So we'd have a contract in place and then they have to develop the test. Now, what Ms. Harris said, they've all, some of these vendors have told us they already have pieces of what they will need in place. So they may be able to get it ready to, I think the best case scenario is to administer kind of the first field testing in the '25, '26 school year.
So that's why they need the standards so they can develop.
That's right.
Okay.
We have to have the standards done so they can develop the test. This is what we're testing against.
Got you, okay.
And will they just test us a pilot or a small few?
They will, they'll do what they call a field test. They'll probably pick, they're probably, here the word probably. Usually when they do a field test, they like to do all the institutions, to offer it to all the institutions. But, but they're not, there's no high stakes, so that, so they can get enough students to, to set the cut scores and those kinds of things. There, it's rea, this is really difficult because, give me an example, I'm going to use the ACT for example. We did this year, we field tested new items for the ACT. So they basically, they had on four or five questions. They give, they already have a testing pool. They give, so they add a few questions to everybody's test. And those questions don't count on your score. But they are field tested and then they throw some out, they use some. And, but, but they already have a testing pool because there's a group of people going to be taking the ACT. And they do the same thing, they do the, you know, I'm sure the bar exam does the same thing. The problem here is there is no existing testing pool. So it's going to be really hard, you're starting from scratch to develop something. Now, the only, there are only a few vendors out there. One of them is ETS, which does the Praxis, which we already do a lot of work with. The other one is Pearson, which owns the Foundations of Reading test. My, I have not talked to either one of them, though Ms. Harris and them out, that's what I wanted them to top these vendors. We fully expect both of them to respond to the RFP. So they do have a national testing pool, but not for this exam. One of the, the other good things though, is that there are other states already asking us about when we're going to have an exam in place. Because they may want to do this too. So you know, numeracy's the next big thing lots of states are looking at. So once a test is developed, it's possible that other states will, will get on board quickly too. And then we'll be able to get some national comparison numbers. Because right now, see, we don't have that. We do with the Praxis, we do with the Foundations of Reading. We can look and see what the pass rates are in Mississippi or Massachusetts or, you know, other states. But with this test, all we're going to have is our graduates to start with. It will be, you know, this is going to be probably three or four years down the road before it actually is in place and can count. For somebody's, you know, you have to make this score because we have to first field test it. Then we have to set the cut scores, then we have to apply the cut scores. Again, very different from what we did with reading because there was already a test in place. And we just adopted the test and we adopted the cut scores there, based on what had happened in other states. But this is going to be a long road to get this test in place. Now in the meantime, realize we will not go away with our Praxis test. We still, we already require the Praxis Mathematics test for these graduates. And so that test will remain in place until the new test comes. And no changes will be made without the board's approval.
Well, if they have the standards, if they have the new standards, then they could go ahead and be working toward preparing their students.
Absolutely.
With those new standards.
And that's what you intended?
Absolutely, and that's what Dr. Miller was saying this morning. They already have the courses, but based on the standards, which they've not seen yet. Y'all get to see it first. So these deans that were here this morning have not even seen the standards. But she was anticipating, we're going to have to go ahead and make some changes. We, we anticipate making changes based on what the board does with these new rules.
Okay, that's a good background.
Okay, Dr. Anderson, now it's all yours, but.
Tag on it.
It's yours.
Thank you for this opportunity to share. I'm excited to be here. As Dr. Mackey stated, these proposed documents are submitted in order to meet deadlines and expectations that are established in the Numeracy Act. And they were developed through a collaborative process with members of the Post-Secondary Task Force. Those task force members consulted the latest research. And there are several organizations listed in the law, such as National Council of Teachers of Mathematics, the Conference Board of the Mathematics Scientists and others. So those and others were consulted as the documents that you have before you were created. So beginning with the K-5 coaching endorsement. So the law lays out four specific courses and we have them before you. The four courses are K-2 Content and Pedagogy, 3-5 Content and Pedagogy, Coaching Principles and Literacy in Mathematics Education. Everything is laid out for that.
Just to be clear, this is six, this is item six and seven. I actually have skipped five, I did not mean it, it's not your fault. I skipped five, which Dawn Morrison is patiently waiting for, and she's like, she's, we'll come back to five after. Let's do, we're going to do these. And it was what was on my mind and I was looking straight at Dr. Anderson, and then we'll come back and do the computer science. So, so you should be on item six, not five, my apologies.
I apologize, I cut the line. So those four course names are listed in the law. But the, the department and the task force have been charged with actually developing the content for those courses. Just the names are there. And the courses are aligned to the courses of study with the, aligned to the appropriate grade level. And there are actually several expectations listed in the law that provide the content, particularly for the Coaching Principles and the Literacy in Mathematics courses. The field experience is embedded throughout those four courses. And there is a specific emphasis with the coaching course on use of the Alabama Coaching Framework, which is already in place across the state. So that's really just a high level overview of the coaching endorsement courses. And then going on to the standards.
Let me ask a question about that first, if there's any questions.
Do you have any questions about the four courses for the coaching endorsement?
And these would be, institutions that want to offer these will have to come back to you and say, you know, we're ready to, we're ready to offer these courses. So there'll be another step of this. Once we approve this, institutions that will want to offer this, and we hope many of them will, will be coming back to you for approval.
I've been really, I really did study, and every time I study, the literacy law. And I've read it probably more times than I care to even admit, I always find something new. So I have challenged myself to do that with the numeracy law. And so with that, there are certain, and I, I talked to the individuals and I've been talking to people and all that. And so I know there's aspects that, for the content and all that, they're supposed to be, you're supposed to go to various, like the U.S. Department of Education, all that, for research.
Yes.
So, and I know it said minimally, you're supposed to go to four different. So what did though, from doing that research and seeking their, what was their, what were they telling us?
So, yeah, across the board, what was found generally, and, and that really applies more toward the standards.
That's what I was afraid, I was jumping the gun.
And not really for the coaching endorsement courses.
Well, can you go ahead and talk to it anyhow?
So that research really shows that content and pedagogy should be interwoven together and not taught separately. And that has implications for colleges of education and just making sure that the appropriate personnel are in place to provide that kind of instruction. As opposed to an individual who wants to teach second grade taking pre-calculus. Pre-calculus in and of itself is not going to help me be a better second grade math teacher. I need to know the second grade, really need to know all of the content K-5. I really need, I really need all of that. And I also need to know the pedagogy, what are the best ways to teach that content? What are the best practices? And just as a sidebar, there have been a list of evidence-based practices that the Elementary Math Task Force has, has recommended. And so that information needs to be woven in as well. So it's really a combination. It's pure math and the pedagogy recommendations are, they should be interwoven seamlessly and not separately.
So some of your institutions have, many of our institutions, and that's not for any fault of their own, but the way they do, and we'll compare reading. When you're an elementary teacher and you're learning to teach reading, you don't go to the College of Letters or Business or something to learn reading instruction. It's usually taught in the College of Education by somebody who's a master, supposed to be a master at teaching reading. So that, that's what Dr. Anderson just said, that pedagogy and content knowledge are married. With mathematics, what's traditionally happen is you have to have some math courses. And so you go to the math department and take them. Those courses may not, she's already said, I'm not, I'm just repeating this, but they, they may not, they may make you a better mathematician, but not a better second grade math teacher. The research says that we need to move those math courses for elementary and especially collaborative teachers, especially in early childhood, out of the math department and back into the College of Ed where we are teaching content and pedagogy at the same time. So how do I teach second graders math, not just taking a math class and transferring it over? And that we think is one of our real, I said this, Dr. Reynolds heard me say it to the Rotary Clubs in Huntsville last week. That's been one of our real problems is not that our teachers don't know how to do math, but doing math and teaching math are two very different things. And this will be a shift. Now this is coaching and then the standards are coming, but this will be a shift for many of our colleges because they're going to have to employ more people. And they're going to have to employ people that not just can work, you know, for levels of higher math problems, but people who can help teachers understand the pedagogy behind it. I personally think that's one of the problems we have, that our teachers are afraid of teaching math because they've never been taught to teach math. Not that they've not been taught math, but they've not been taught how to teach math. And we are really having to, that's one reason we're deploying coaches across the board, is to try for our thousands of teachers who are already in the classroom, to go back and help them learn how to teach math. Because the easiest thing to do is just to teach, to teach students to work a problem and then give them 50 problems that are exactly the same, and then think that that's it. But that doesn't necessarily help them know what that problem represents and how to apply it to higher math. So, and we're not that, we, as y'all know, we're not the only state facing this. As a country, we really got off the track on math doing that. And we've got to, we've, we've got to get back on track and we're trying to do it really fast.
As Dr. Mackey referenced, I had the opportunity to listen to him talk at, or to a group of Rotarians nationalized. When he made the transition about what math calculations were and how word problems were really teaching math. I watched those guys glaze eyes over. And I understood the philosophy you're talking about, but it is a whole different dimension. When you're talking about what you presented to them. It might be interesting, I wish I'd taped your lecture so I could reflect on my colleagues. But my question, I have a question here. And that is, I don't have any qualms about item six or eight. It's item seven and nine, because six and eight go out and have review. And item seven and nine are to adopt it without out for input. And I guess my question, because we've gotten a number of colleagues that aren't here, why, what is the crisis that has to be adopted in June instead of adopted in August? Because out for.
We actually discussed that when you were out of the room.
I'm sorry.
I will, let me go back to that. So, so the, two things. One is we're trying to, we want to, working really fast to try to get ahead. But the, the Act anticipates this adoption by June 30th. And so adopting that as an emergency rule gets us in the timeline. It sends, I think, a good message to the legislature that we're, we're working as fast as we can and trying to make the timelines very aggressive. And the other one is it sends a definite message to our colleges that this is where we're headed. We may make some changes, you make some, you know, you can still make some edits and changes before the final rule's adopted. But now, there is a.
Well, they, it's adopted as rule, will that conveyance indicate that there is flexibility in application of that rule? Because the rule is the rule.
That's right, and the emergency rule lasts for 120 days.
Yes, sir.
And within 120 days, we have to adopt the final rule. Doesn't have, again, we make changes in there, but we have to adopt the final rule within 120 days. Or we would have to, you know, if the board can't come to a conclusion, we have to re, go through the process again. So if that didn't work, we're going to do something else.
So the reason we're adopting the rule immediately is because of compliance with the legislature more than the fact that we, we deem it pedagogy to be important?
Well, I think it's both.
I don't mean to be that critical, that's our reason.
Yeah, I think it's both. I think it's, it's one, to be in compliance. I think it's, it's one, to, to be in compliance, just send the message that we are moving this as fast as we can. But also, I mean, the work's been done, the higher ed task force has been meeting. And so I would not anticipate great deal of changes. Now, I do think there may be some, just like when we brought the literacy standards that you finalized this morning. When we made those public, after the work session I mentioned this morning, Excel and Ed sent some edits in. We thought they were all good edits, and so we accepted them. So I think that maybe even before June, you may see some edits that come in from outside organizations like that. But I wouldn't anticipate they would be major edits. And, and it would allow us to move on. Now, we don't have to, that's up to the board. But I just think that I don't want us to be seen as waffling on moving things forward.
I guess I'm trying to determine, if you're adopting the administrative code, if you really don't mean it exactly as that, and it's flexible to, for not, for people to not take it literally. You said adjustments made, you can't adjust, if we adopt the administrative code, it is code at that point.
That's right.
So what's the flexibility?
Well, you could adopt before.
Let me finish, that code's in effect for 120 days as code, as law, right?
That's right.
So what's their flexi, you said there may be adjustments internally. How do they do that?
Well, if you come back and you say, well, we want to, you know, hearing from the public, well, we want to change this to this, as long as they're minor changes, I wouldn't anticipate major changes again. Just like y'all wanted to add the three-Qing to the reading code. So we added that in, but we, and we added the MSV. That was what was added after the fact, was the, the defining more broadly what three-Qing meant. So I think you could come in here too, I'll pick one out, and say, you know, there's actually a more specific way to say this, to make it clear that this is what we want, and not this. And so we would be sending a...
Just, I was just going to say, point of clarification, I think, where you're going, Reynolds, that the, the emergency rule is the temporary rule for 120 days. Yes, it's in effect, but we're also running parallel with a permanent rule. So that's where you're talking about, you can add the changes and do the tweaks.
In the permanent rule. But in the meantime...
Yeah, in the meantime, yes.
You've got to, I'm trying to clarify, legally, there's no, they have to comply with the temporary rule if we adopt it as a temporary rule. And I have not met seen many temporary rules before that we thought were flexible during that time period.
Now, the temporary rule won't be flexible because it is the rule. But before the final rule is adopted, if you say, well, I would want to change, you know, number G261 to say this, it can be, but I wouldn't think we would make major changes. If I thought there were going to be major changes, we wouldn't be recommending it. I'm, I mean, I'm ready to adopt it with no changes. That is what we're recommending. But I'm, but this is the first time you're seeing it. The public's not seeing it yet. They won't see it till after the meeting, and so there may be some additional input. Now, it's not being like Dr. Anderson sat down in a closet and wrote all this by herself. She's getting lots of input from the two task forces, our certification people, the higher ed deans have been able to have input into it. So there's lots of people who've looked at this and given input. And one of the, the major things that I love is that if you look at the standards, I realize we're kind of jumping to the next one. They're actually, well, actually on the coaching one too, they are tying every piece of this back to the course of study. This is why this is important, because if you're going to teach children to meet this standard, that then we are testing on the A-CAP, which is aligned to the NATE, then this is what we need you in college to learn.
How soon is this endorsement going to be applied to the, we were talking about a coaching endorsement, right?
So a coaching endorsement, once we approve it, then institutions that want to offer the coaching endorsement, we hope a lot of them will, they'll have to come back to the board and say, we're ready to offer the coaching endorsement, here's our program, here's the way we intend to, to teach it, just like those three deans were here this morning. So it will be months. I mean, they'll have to come back. And now, as they, again, Dr. Miller made comment this morning, they're ready. They want to move on this fast, but they can't move until we, we do this.
I will say, I don't know about the other colleges of higher ed, but I did attend a dean's roundtable at Auburn. And I think for some time now, I mean, since the law was passed, Dean Fairbrother has had the professors from COSAM, the College of Science and Mathematics, included in his roundtable preparing for implementation. So the professors that actually teach mathematics are aware of the law and preparing for how to prepare these courses. If that makes sense?
That does, that does.
So I, I don't know what the others are doing, but I, I, yes ma'am? I suspect that they're having similar work.
Yes, ma'am. I, I asked to speak because as we travel and go visit each of the institutions, one of the recurring questions involves numeracy and what changes there would be expected to make. Of course, we couldn't say too much because the standards haven't been developed yet, we didn't have those out. However, we have consistently communicated that one of the expectations, instead of having a breadth of content as we have now with several math courses that both Dr. Anderson and Dr. Mackey alluded to, now we have more depth into that knowledge that those students need to understand in kindergarten through their grade. And so that is one of the huge pieces, and that not just looking at content separate from pedagogy, but really looking at deep content pedagogy. So they have that sneak peek into what's to be expected. And many of them are already beginning, beginning the conversations on campus in terms of how they can make shifts and adjustments. Right now, at this time, we have visited, of the 24, we have visited 15.
Okay.
I guess that you helped answer my question as well. So these roundtable deans you saw and saw, are any of them, would any of them need to access this certification before August? They, do they need the...
I probably am not qualified to answer that.
No, no, I'm saying, I said, based on what you heard. If you didn't hear anything, I understand that. But you said they seem to be preparing for it. But I have not seen, in my discussions, any move that they would need this endorsement finalized before August. And that's the difference between adopting the temporary rule and just doing it procedurally. It's, I don't see it, I'm not seeing it as an emergency. I see as a, I certainly agree with the concept and the writing of the rule. What I don't see is the emergency aspect of it. I'm sorry. And I haven't seen, been convinced yet that it's an emergency.
Well, with, with all due respect, I will, I, I will say that I've had opportunities to, to speak to different deans, different professors, department heads, as well as to, a, just about the process that it takes, to Dr. Mackey's point, it takes time to develop these courses. And I, I, I know that the law has been out for two years. But our, our EPPs have really been waiting for this information. And they, they, if they could have had it yesterday, they, they would love to have it. Because they just need every single minute they have on hand to be able to craft, to, to my understanding, and I'm not sure I'm going to get this right. But before they have courses, they have to have checklists in place. And before that, they certainly have to have timelines in place. And then, and the standards are what you're looking at that undergird the entire process. So just as soon, that's, that's just what I'm hearing across the state, as I, I talk to individuals, that the sooner they can get this information, the better. It's just going to help them make plans for, for our future teachers.
Will they not see our intent to adopt it as that kind of basis to deal with you what you said? In fact, we list it as an intent to adopt and we vote for that?
They would. But that's my recommendation. I saw on her, my recommendation is that we adopt it as an emergency rule for 120 days and concurrently run the permanent rule.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's not on her, I want to make that clear. That's, I'm the one who made that comment.
I was just asking your opponent.
Yes, ma'am.
The, the other thing I wanted to mention in, in terms of Dr. Reynolds' question, the other thing on campuses, beyond those things that Dr. Anderson just pointed to, institutions that are going to have to make some huge shifts in terms of their faculty, they, when they have a rule that has been adopted, they can go with that rule and say, we need these faculty because this is a requirement for our programs. And that's what many of the institutions are waiting on in terms of the standards, so that they can go to their administrative offices and say, we have to have these faculty and this is why. And so the, the intent would not give them that leverage to be able to communicate that information as effectively as a rule that has been adopted.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate your explanations.
Thank you. Any other questions about this? I know you have more to share, so I don't want to cut you off.
No, no, that's, that's fine. That's with regard to the coaching endorsement, I just wanted to be sure that your questions were addressed there. There, there are a number of expectations within the law that, that feed the content. And, and honestly, the, the standards, which is the second document, they're really the foundation, not just of the perspective foundations of math assessment, but they're also the foundation of the K2 and the 3-5 course. Now, this, this coaching endorsement is designed by the law to be a post-baccalaureate endorsement. So it cannot be part of any undergraduate courses. But the K2 and the 3-5 content, you know, the course of study is the course of study. So the, so the, the standards provide the foundation and there are, you'll see the verbs that are listed in terms of the, the level of expertise or expectation for our, our pre-service teachers. And those verbs are more sophisticated for these K2 and 3-5 courses in the coaching endorsement. Because it is, it is expected for those who are going for this endorsement that they have mastered this content. And they should be able to demonstrate mastery now at a more sophisticated level when they're going for an endorsement. Anything else you want to share with us about the standards? Just, just that the, the standards themselves undergird everything. And these were created as part of, again, just references to a number of different documents. And you'll see them referenced here in a number of different organizations. To Dr. Hampton's point, this is going to require some significant shifts in perspective. And we're, we're really excited. There is, we have an opportunity to really do some, some powerful transformational work at our university level that is really going to impact positively K12 education through the K5 standards.
I certainly like the definition of numeracy, which helps us to explain what numeracy is. Very much like Dr. Mackey explained to those Rotarians, right, Dr. Mackey?
That's right.
That's basically what you tried to, when they asked you what numeracy was, by the time you got explaining that having a 25 addition, subtraction tables didn't mean you were literate in numeracy.
Well, I, when you read through this and I saw the paragraph that discusses pedagogy and andragogy, or only educators could write these.
Well, the definition of numeracy is anybody, and I didn't get into the other. But I appreciate that, that's very well done.
Seems to be consistent in that the standards require that we understand, explain and model these standards, which align very much with our literacy standards, that we found a short outline for us last year and that we would be able, that, that teacher candidates or coaches would be able to understand and explain and model these concepts and standards. Since I'm not one to use the terminology everyone else uses, that seems to be very clear to what your expectations are for the universities. So thank you.
That little aspect of word problems is going to be pretty important now.
They are. But what I, quickly, what I'd said to those Rotarians, this is why I try to explain it to folks, is that many of us went to school and the teacher said, do one through 20, or they, or do one through 20 odds only because the evens had the answer in the back of the book. And you don't have to do 21 through 25 because we're not doing the word problems. When really, they'd have been better off just doing 21 through 25. Because the algorithm is, is essential. And that's why when we adopted the new math standards, we made sure that algorithms are the base. But applying the algorithm is the only way they truly become numerate.
That's what they got, when you said, don't, you have to do word problems.
Like breaks out my sweat. So this would, so we would go back to five, if you're okay with that, and talk about computer science then. And I'm going to ask Dawn Morrison to come up. I don't know who all is coming up here. Are you all, is the whole back row coming, Mr. Donald Shaw? Are you coming? Yeah, come on. Amanda Dykes, Dawn Morrison.
We've got chairs today, just all of them up there.
Sean Stevens, Sean, do you want to come up? Come on, we'll bring you a chair. We'd love to have you. This is a, I love that because this isn't across the, across the department discussion that we've been having. So let me set them up also. Now first, just make sure you know everybody. Sean Stevens, who leads instructional services for us. Amanda Dykes, who specializes in computer science, works in our career tech area. And then Dawn Morrison, who is our assistant director in career tech. That's probably, that's not the right exact word. But she works directly under Dr. Jimmy Hall, and you know, is retiring. And so I announced yesterday, she's going to step in as our headroom. She hasn't accepted yet, but I didn't really ask. Keep that on track for a couple of months while we do a search. And she, so works in career tech. The three of them have all worked in our computer science endeavors. And as you know, we've, we've really done a lot with computer science. You require every high school to offer computer science. The, but code.org, which is an outside organization, most of you've heard of. Code.org is a national organization that kind of sets the computer science standards for the country. They have nine standards that states must meet to be, I don't know, computer science ready is not the right term, but something like that. And we've met all nine for a long time, thanks to the work right here. Last summer, so you've, you've heard me say this before, so this is review. They announced that a 10th one was coming. And that is to require some computer science for high school graduation. So we've been talking about this internally since last summer. In November, I know at least Amanda and Dawn got to go to a national code.org meeting where there were people all over the country discussing this among other topics. And so what we have before you is a recommendation that would change the graduation requirements in the 2030s, okay, to require computer science. We already offer it, but to require everybody to have something in computer science for graduation would not have been additional credit. They could take a computer science course and sub that course out for a math or science, which they can currently do. They could sub it for a career tech course or as an elective. Or they could take a, a course with enough computer science embedded credit that it would count. And that, to me, is kind of, that's where I see us going. So for instance, I've taken auto repair. When, if you've been doing, if you've had your car worked on recently, you know that the person working on it has to understand computers. And so there's actually computer science embedded in that course. We would turn around, I talked to our career tech staff yesterday and said, we, by we, I mean y'all. So we'll have to make, do articulation and say, which courses have computer science embedded in them and therefore would count as a, as a, not a credit, but they would count toward this requirement. We'd have a little time to do that because, again, code.org is not suggesting anybody try to do this overnight, but you have a long rampway. But, you know, that class of 2031 is not that far away, or 32, I think it says.
They're fourth graders now.
So we would be having to think about, as they go into building their, their four-year plans in the eighth grade, which is like 26, what does this look like for them? So there's, there's more... So there's, there's more groundwork to be done, but first we have to talk with you about that requirement. And we'll, this is also somewhat time sensitive because if we, they're, they're going to make their, they're going to list the states that are compliant with the tenth requirement to require this for high school, computer science for high school graduation this summer. And I'm trying to get us ahead so that we show up as a blue state on that list deal rather than being one that's working on it. And there's no guarantee that we would, but I think that they would accept what we've got. We've been working with code.org. We haven't, they haven't had any input in this, though. That's the thing is we want you to, they've asked, they've kind of nicely asked to see it ahead of time. And we said, no, the board gets it first. And then once it's public, you can look at it and ma, again, make comments on it. So, and these folks can better, they, again, can better talk about what the content is, what it would look like. But I just wanted to explain some of the process and where we are and why we are looking at this change. So I don't know if you want to talk first. Dawn, would you talk first? Can I talk to you? You tell them a little bit about what we currently do, what our current computer science offerings are and how the process might unfold.
Absolutely. So strictly at the high school level, we all know that in 2019, we passed computer science legislation. And so with that 2020, 21 school year, all high schools had to offer computer science. Certainly at the onset of that legislation, the department identified nine high school courses that would qualify to meet that criteria in the legislation. We also have about eighteen, at least eighteen dual enrollment courses as well that are identified. We also developed an access distance learning course so that we could kind of, you know, level the playing field, if you will, to be an equalizer for those that did not have a certified computer science teacher. Although we don't suggest that to be the first, you know, opportunity for a student to take a computer science course. So that is where we are. We're about maybe eighty, eighty, eighty-eight, eighty, eighty-five to eighty-eight percent toward implementing at the high school level in terms of offering. And so certainly making the computer science graduation a requirement would definitely be another layer of equalizing, you know, access to computer science education across the state. I'm sure Amanda's going to probably talk on the part about, you know, I, I see computer science as, you know, it touches everything that we do. We would definitely be doing our students a disservice if we did not move in this direction. You know, certainly with, you know, generative, you know, AI e- emerging. It is here. We have to ensure that our students, regardless of what profession that they move into, that they are fully equipped to analyze data, to, you know, think, create, you know, creatively, as well as, you know, think about, you know, algorithmic processes and decomposition and abstractions that, you know, our numeracy act also emphasizes as well. So that, that's our position. We're here to support you all as a board, whatever direction we decide to move into.
Amanda, you want, you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, I'd be glad to add on. Like she was saying that, it was funny because she was talking about the different things in the numeracy act. And you mentioned algorithms. We're like.
We looked at each other.
You know, so that's a huge part. Data science is a big part. We know with that ACT score, that's always the lowest piece, is that data science piece. And that is part of these courses. And, and we're seeing that grow as teachers are learning about POCUP and things like that, and they're adding that into their courses. We've certified, I think, almost five hundred high school teachers have gotten some kind of course-specific permit over the four years I've been here. And that's been a huge, that's a huge piece of our, I guess our job is to make sure the teachers are getting certified. We have the teams ready just to help teachers move forward. Getting them ready now for the praxis. They have that one course-specific permit and now we're working to get them certified across the board. The students are also, the courses are getting too easy for them. So we're actually having to ramp up some of these courses. Because now, if you look at it, they're starting this in kindergarten and that's the requirement. So now we're moving from kindergarten to middle school. Our middle school numbers are a large piece of our numbers. I think we have like twenty-four thousand middle schoolers in computer science right now. So those kids are fixing the mood to high school and we want to make sure that we're still supporting them to learn that computational thinking, how to, you know, problem solve. I think that's the biggest part of our curriculum is that problem solving piece. And so we're, so we're definitely, we've got the kids ready for this. That it's not something that's going to be new for them. And so as, as they get older, we're going to need this to be stronger. And, you know, with code.org, we, we got recognized this year for being, having ninety-five percent of our schools, their definition of offer and our definition of offer are different. Our definition is that you have a course with a teacher and students in it. Code.org is that it was on your course selection sheet. And so ninety-five percent of our high schools had it on their course selection sheet. And I think it was ninety-two in middle schools. So, so we're making progress. And we were the only, we're the only people that have been awarded that award who does not have computer science as a graduation requirement. When you look at our, our demographics, our demographics of our students in our high schools and our students who are taking computer science are equal. Some of them were actually higher. I think it's Hispanic, I want to say that demographic. And there's one more that we actually have more than our regular demographics. The only one where we're always lacking is females taking the courses. And we know that, we see the, the states who do require this, and we see that that's usually across the board, a better demographic. So we know that that's going to help with that, too. So we're already making a little good progress. And I think this would even take it to another level if we go this route.
Why do we have to wait so long? It just takes forever. I mean, I hate to be like that, but why couldn't we have students at the end of like twenty twenty-eight, twenty-nine have this requirement? Why do we have to go all the way into the thirties?
Oh, yeah. I was, that's what I originally.
Yeah. It's a lot more students that have to be accommodated.
Correct.
So we're not, so offering it, and the, in many schools, they offer it, but the take-up is, is kind of low. So that's been the thing is just we want every school, every school in America to offer computer science. Alabama jumped on that early. But in many schools, you're going to go from twenty students to a hundred and twenty. And so you have to have, she's talking about, you have to send teachers back to school to get the computer science permit. Well, that's a lot more pe, the, the person who's there now can't take on that much more of a load. And that's why this is actually not internal. Code.org, and I've been in three meetings with, with, with Sal himself and with the, that's not right, anyway, the head of code.org.
Hadi.
Sal Hum, but not him.
Hadi.
Hadi. Hadi Perthabi. He, he's, he said, don't do this too fast because what will happen is you won't do it right. Like your schools, and, and already, I don't want to call any states, but there's some states that say all their students are getting it. But it's, it's a lower level of computer science than what we're expecting. And I don't want us to say, we're going to require it and we're going to, we're going to make it really easy on everybody so that everybody has something, but it's not actually teaching them those computational thinking skills and the data science they need. So I don't know if that's a good answer. They could, I will say this.
Can they adopt?
It'll come on faster. Schools could, could implement faster.
Faster if they have the resources.
And we don't, you know, we don't want to go from ten miles an hour to a hundred and fifty in the year 2030. So our plan would be that we would see this gradual increase that would kind of then really take a sharp tick up at the end.
Dr. Mackey, I understand not too fast, but I also understand not too slow. And we're only dealing with this year's fourth graders. And you talk about how many elementary people are already having it. I am not questioning the too fast, but twenty thirty-two appears to me to be not a very creative or doesn't anticipate. I think we could do better. I think we can do it sooner than that. I'm not saying four years, and I don't know. How'd you pick thirty-two? What was the components?
Code is what, we're following code.org's recommendation.
But other states already have it as a requirement. You said there are more states that have it as a graduation requirement. That's different than that. Did I hear that correctly?
There are about six states that have adopted something. Doesn't mean they're already doing it. They've already.
I misunderstood.
We're the only state that I know of that is pursuing this through the state board. In all the other states, code.org is going to state legislatures to do it. They came here saying, we're going to go to your legislature and get a law passed on this, what we want to say. And I actually have said, whoa, 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 that's the board's work. We would prefer you give us a chance to do that work before you go work in the legislature. So.
So it's really not later than thirty-two is what I actually.
Yeah, right, right.
So have you been receiving feedback from the high school principals and superintendents and all about their? Because I know I hate to add any requirements for graduation. I hate it. But, but I think their back feedback is imperative because it's another aspect that's being placed on their shoulders. And if it's already coming to fruition, then, and, and I understand that, that process as well. But my question is, have you been going to schools? Have you been talking to them and getting what will make? And I know thirty-two sounds like a long way away, but it isn't. Blink your eye. So what is their feedback?
One, they haven't seen this rule yet.
That's right.
Because remember, y'all see it first. So they, you're probably going to hear that feedback by next Monday, I imagine. This comes out on their.
I guess to pick on her, her, off her question, item two is what it counts for. How are, how do we see the, in the real world out there, are any of them already looking to do the, the equivalency? So speak to the equivalency. Item two is probably something that's taking on what you said, the high school principal. I would love already to have this equivalency for, in the pathways legislation, too, that, for it to count. So speak to the item two then, please, for me. Do you mind, Dr. Mackey?
Uh, I'm not sure. I'm looking.
Each computer science credit shall count as, that's the equivalency, right?
Okay. So they, so there are two things, yes. Let me just go back. Two things in here. So first would the computer science, we're adding it as a college career readiness indicator. Okay? So that's one thing. That's under D. And then when you go down, we're saying for, except for certain, certain diplomas issued certain ways. And that's a, that deals with, I won't get into that. I think it's probably obvious. But then three to G, we kind of define what the computer science would be, commencing with the cohort of students that graduate thirty-one, thirty-two. So that's the freshman class of twenty-six, I think. So it's not that far away. We're in twenty-four now. So the freshman class of twenty-six, then all public school students would have to, I may have that year wrong. Look, twenty-nine, okay. The freshman class of twenty. Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, yeah. Yeah, I was thinking. So twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
That's already in the.
They would all, they would have to demonstrate digital literacy by earning at least one credit in an ALSD approved computer science course, which you mentioned, too. You've already got nine plus eighteen dual enrollment. So we have a list of those, but we would have to expand the list. Or a course with embedded computer science that would count. And so those lists would expand between now and then. That's one thing. It gives us a chance to develop some new courses and or re-add into some of the courses to make sure they have the requisite computer science so they could count. Then how they count it, so it will be, and you're going to, you know, in a couple of months, maybe less, we're going to come back and talk about the legislation for a new pathway to the high school diploma. So this will feed right in with that because one of, one of the computer science could count as a career tech course. It could count as a math or science course, which it actually already can. Or it could count as an elective credit, which it already can. So the anticipation is we would, that, in my mind, that eventually most of our students would get their computer science through another existing course, not having to take computer science one. Now, some of them we all, we offer that, but they would get it through a project leading the way course or through an engineering course or through auto mechanics course or through an agri-science course. But some of those courses are going to have to change their standards to make sure that they have, they have some computer science now. But let's say you're going to get your computer science stamped through ag science. Well, they may have to go back and reinvent some of the ag science courses to add more of the data literacy computational thinking in so they have enough to count. So that work's all going to be done, too.
And that takes time.
I was referencing two G, I mean, item G two, which is that if you fulfill the computer science course, then it can count as a math or science credit.
That's right.
Which is going to relate to some of the new pathway requirements to.
That's right.
So that's why I was referencing G two. I mean, not being clear when I said two. Because I'm really more concerned with the, the changes that were made than the other, because that's where my focus is.
That's right. And some of them are doing that now. They can now substitute a computer science course for either a math or a science in their four sequence. They can substitute algebra one or geometry or biology. They have, those are basically required.
So for example, if you had an ag course that counted as, or, or mechanics course, where you're talking about, your reference, technology in that auto mechanics course, you've got, you counted that as a computer science credit, correct? You could.
You could, yes.
So if you counted it as computer science credit, it could also count as a science credit stepping down.
Well, no, Sean, you're going to have to help me with this. But, so you can't, so you have to have twenty-four credits to graduate. You cannot take, say, a, an, an auto science course and count that. You cannot own your, your, you can, you can't count as a science and a computer science and a career tech course. You can't count that as three separate credits. What they can do.
Three set, I'm not talking, three set requirements, checkouts. If I took one course in computer and auto mechanics and did all this technology, so I check off the computer science course, and it's also very much science. I don't know how it's going to relate to new pathway legislation when you finally see it. But I see it being a check off, not count as three credits, but three components to graduate.
Okay, so it could be counted off. So because of the way this is worded, a course that includes embedded computer science skills, then that person could check off their computer science skills and get credit for a CTE course with the same course.
And a science credit.
And possibly a science credit, too. I don't want to say that one does. We already, we do have that now, articulation. So there are like some food science courses that count as a science and as a culinary course. Sean, you probably explain this.
You're almost exactly perfect on it. So what's great about this is the state board's already adopted rules many years ago that allows embedded credit for math and science to already be embedded into certain career tech programs. And this is actually really timely because it's time to start that process of reviewing and approving these new pathways that career tech courses of study have already, that you've already adopted for them. So this is actually a perfect timing for us to take. And the approach we want to do now is exactly what this, this code change says, which is to take a group of courses. In the past, it was a certain number of hours. Now we want to actually say, if you take these three courses within ag mechanics, it has enough computer science embedded into those three courses that you could meet the requirement of a computer science graduation requirement while also maintaining, you know, you could be a completer or even further along than that. So that we have, the, the ability is already there and the, and the process is there. We're, we're excited to get to work on that and see, like you said, Dr. Mackey, the ones that currently already have really robust standards that really would meet those criteria. But then if there's some revisions that need to be made, then want to come back to you and ask for your approval to adopt new and more rigorous standards within any of those pathways that don't. We see it as a win-win.
I agree with you.
And, and I think that's many schools, I mean, I do think you're going to see a lot more schools pushing a lot more students into these computer science courses a lot faster than 2029. But all the work that has to be done to get it ready for every one of our fifty-five thousand graduates, I would worry about saying everybody's going to have everything done earlier than that. If we get into it and we, we, you know, we hit the goal early, we'll, we'll try to hit the goal early. But. But if we say we're gonna, you know, I mean, that's a big, for a graduate, that's a big thing. We can't get it in place in time and then they can't graduate. We'd be coming back to you asking for an emergency rule to allow students to graduate, so.
I'm, I'm agreeing, and much like what you told the Rotary Club, mathematics is more than just figuring. No, he, maybe we shouldn't reference that. The concept of mathematics to be more than add and subtract is doing the word problems. And even, and not of it, and especially, I learned a lot about agriculture. If you're taking ag, you know more genetics than many of our current bio- biology courses. Sometimes our biology courses are not that in-depth. If you take ag or many of the other, the, the delightful young lady that says, we used to take home ag. Well, now it's a completely different.
Right.
Definition, and we don't just have, still, you know, I don't have, is it? I'll stop.
I do think, too, I wanna go back to what one of the, these ladies said, I can't remember who, about the online option. So they did create an online option through access so that we could get some computer science out to every high school. We may try to do some more robust stuff. As y'all know, computer science, if you're new to it, is a hard thing to teach without a teacher in the room. And the, but, but we're in a time when, when we think about going to some of these rural schools that have fifteen seniors, and to find somebody that can teach this, we may end up having to think again about some more online or, or partially online, partially in-person. I think we're gonna have to, have to think of some new delivery methods. The University of West Alabama, Daryl Bagg, they, they've got a lot of credit today, but they have actually been going, a four-year university into high schools in the black belt and teaching some of the computer science for us and helping do that. And they bought these mobile labs that I would wish everybody could see and get, go in. I think Dr. Chestnut's been in one. It's, it's a computer lab on a truck. And they pull it in and, uh, and then the students can just come out of the school and do their computer science there. Without that partnership, many of our black belt schools wouldn't have the, the, the equipment or the expertise to do it. So we gotta be, we'll also have to think about more things like that, I think.
And as we get broadband expanded, some of the online productions allow some of that interaction, too, without being a person.
And I think that's why time is important, that we realize there's all those different aspects that we have to think, like those in the way rural areas, that they might not have the money or the teachers available. So, you know, some schools can get it done tomorrow, but we have those that might need all that time. So that's only fair to them.
Right.
Because we all have those areas.
Okay, thank y'all. Sounds like there's work to be done.
Thank you. And you should wear purple a lot.
Thank you so much.
That's called perry wiggle, I think.
So we're ten.
And we are.
Okay, so we're now.
We're done.
To ten, well, we're not quite done yet. I've got.
Ten is you.
I've, ten is me. I have six things on my list. They won't be as long as all of these, but I need to tell you a couple of things. So first of all, next Thursday, if you can, at, um, two-thirty, please put down for a Zoom call. I don't believe a Zoom, a webex or something. We'll send you a link.
A week from today.
A week from today at two-thirty, you will get the reading proficiency, nor the reading. Don't let me use the wrong word after I get onto all them. Grade level reading results. Okay, so they are in final calculation now. The, uh, we actually would, would already have them done, might push a little harder next year, but, well, look pretty good. Ninety-eight percent of our districts tested their third graders in the first window. And so we already have their data. Some of them chose to test in the last window, so those data are still coming in. That's, that's a couple of percent. But by next week, we'll have all this. They will become live for the districts to look at the next morning. And then they'll have a few days, not long, to verify those data and then notify students that next week if they have to go to, or might need to go to summer reading camp. But we want you to see those state-level data first, so we'll give it to you Thursday afternoon. We will do a press briefing later in the evening on Thursday with that embargo data that they can't release until Friday, but we want you to be able to see it ahead of time. So if you'll just mark that down, two-thirty next week, if you can't join, obviously, we're gonna send it to you. We will load it in assembly and we're just, we'll go through it. For those listening livestream, it will not be a public meeting, but there will be no deliberation. That's important. We can't deliberate. We can only deliver information to you and we can explain it. We can answer questions about, you know, explaining the data, but we can't deliberate things like, you know, the, whatever. So we'll do this and then we'll come back, I'm sure in June, July, we'll talk more about what that looks like, what our summer numbers look like. But if you would, just for now, put down two-thirty next Thursday, if you can join us. I will share that obviously with ones who aren't, aren't able to be here this afternoon. If you're not able to join us, it'll be on your assembly and obviously I'll be able to do, you know, talk to folks about finding anybody who can't join us. We'll, I'll explain what you're looking at.
The data will be on assembly or the?
The data will go on assembly, yes, sir, on the sixteen.
That's the sixteen.
Okay, the, um, another thing I want to show you, in your assembly now, you have some data. If you go to documents, not meetings, but if you go to documents, the document's gonna be sideways, I think. My Nora was trying to fix it. She was short, she could, on a regular computer, you can fix it, but on an iPad, you can't. But it's sideways. But we have loaded in your documents, two documents, class B and an alternate A, foundations of reading results. So this is the new foundations of reading test that you're requiring. I can also give you a hard copy. Now, you have data that will never be publicly released, and that's why it's stamped confidential. Because if there are fewer than ten students, remember, under FERC, we cannot release that institution's data publicly. So when we do a public report, you're gonna see a lot of asterisks, except for the institutions that have more than ten. But I wanted you to see all of it. I'll help you find it.
She can't even, it's not, I'm not.
Look at your doctor.
I'm the man.
Oh, okay, you have to go to this link. So you have to go to the real assembly. You're just on the short version for iPad. Go to the link.
That one right there.
The orange link. And then log in.
Oh, God.
There's your login credential. I'll show you.
Okay.
Just, so let me just read them to you.
That was lovely.
But I'm gonna read you some of them. So statewide for class B, so these are undergraduate teachers. We had five-hundred-and-twenty-four teachers that took the test, okay? Four-hundred-and-thirty-eight of them are eighty-four percent fast, passed it on the first administration. Four-hundred-and-twenty-four, five-hundred, five-hundred-and-twenty-four took it, four-hundred-and-thirty-eight passed. That's eighty-four percent pass rate on the first attempt. Another forty-four passed on the second attempt, so that's eight percent. So that means ninety-two percent passed on the first or second attempt. Another eight percent passed on the third attempt. Some, you've already added up. That means a hundred percent pass. Remember, we don't get results for the failures. We only get results for the passes. But so what I wanna look at, what tell, what it tells me, if you passed on the second or third attempt, you went back and got two ring or an extra study. I wanna know how many students passed on the first attempt. Our lowest performing institution, I'm not gonna name the institutions out loud here, but our lowest performing institution, seventy-five percent of their students passed on the first attempt. Now, I will say they only tested four, so three of the four passed on the first attempt. And the other one, they only had four students, the other one passed on the second attempt. So eventually, you know, they, I mean, we only get results for who passes. We don't know how many people took it that never passed. That's important. But, but we know that our lowest performing institution, seventy-five percent of their passers passed on the first attempt, which is pretty good. The, we had several institutions that were a hundred percent, but they're all really small. So they only tested two, three, four students. They're, they're small, private institutions. Of our big institutions, we did have some nineties. So one institution was fifteen out of sixteen passed on the first attempt. And we had some that were in the seventies. We have, you know, an institution where forty-seven out of fifty-four passed. We have another institution forty-seven out of sixty-two passed, so that's a much lower percentage. So they have these data now. This is the first year we've offered this assessment. This is the new assessment that is much more tied to the science of reading than the old practice test. Not that the practice test was bad, but the practice test focused mostly on comprehension, not on phonemic awareness and phonics and the, the basis of the science of reading. So the new test focuses on that. The other sheet you have is alternate A pass rates. Again, that's our masters of a hundred and forty test takers, a hundred and thirty-two, or ninety-four percent passed on the first attempt. I feel a lot better about our masters programs than our V programs. But remember, those are people who are already teaching. And so they, it would make sense. They're already in classroom for the most part. They already have a teaching degree and they're going back and taking, uh, taking this course. I don't mind giving you a hard copy. We thought it would be easier to load it in assembly. I realize it launched, it was turned sideways.
That's okay, we figured.
I know that makes it hard, but again, please don't share these out because they're not FERC-erized. It's a great word. But we, we'll, the, what we release to the public will be, you know, be FERC-erized and we have to take out the institutions that are, I think it's fewer than ten students, which is a lot of them. And that's why I wanted you to have all the data, because I want you to see how much small institutions are doing, too. I do expect these will go up because the standards you adopted this morning, see, this is, uh, we're trying to do so much, and you know, literacy task force work. So we just, this morning, adopted the higher ed standards that this test is supposed to be testing on. But we've already administered the test, so I feel like now that they have the new, and they've already begun moving to the new standards, but I do think next year and the next year, we're gonna see these numbers get better and better and better. I don't wanna beat up our institutions, but this is pretty much, this is kind of what you'd say a platform. This is where we are. These are real numbers, where they are right now. And, um, and again, we don't know how many people took it that didn't report their score. So, but they can't graduate or be recommended for certification without passing the test. And I don't have any deans left, but I think many of the institutions are not letting them student teach before they pass the test. Most of them are not. Am I right, Dr. Hampton?
That's correct.
Yeah, I'm kidding. So they're not going into a classroom at all unless they have passed this. And I don't know, I know it's, it's raw data, so I don't expect you to ask a lot of questions. Now, you can, but I wanted you to have it before it goes public. The deans do have it. Yes, ma'am.
I'm just to add something as a reminder. Look at the dates of this assessment. It was February, September twenty-two through February twenty-four. And remember that September was when we actually started this assessment. So you may wonder about some of the smaller numbers. Some of them were actually completing the old assessment from the program that they were in. So they were exiting because they'd already completed, they admitted in College of Education. And they, so it does not reflect the total numbers that may have been in that particular program.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for reminding that. That's good. Um, so take that. Okay, I'm gonna move on to my third thing. I mentioned this morning, so CTE, I sent to you that Dr. Hall's announced his retirement. We are already, Ms. Martin and Chuck Markham and I are talking about the process, you know, the, and I met with the CTE staff yesterday. We'll, we'll, we find through the interim, we do plan to bring you some sort of recommendation for another person, another assistant superintendent at the July meeting. You know, I've been asked, can't we speed it up and get it done by June? And it's possible that we could, because, you know, if we hire somebody from outside and then they have to leave their job, so it takes some time, but just, you know, that's a month away and we have to go through the process and then get somebody recommended. So my anticipation is it'll be July. But we will consider people, in, internal candidates and external candidates. I've told, um, you know, I've had a couple of calls about it from externally and I've told them to turn, I would turn their name into Ms. Martin. She's keeping a list and we'll, we'll, you know, we'll have, anyway. Just kind of anticipate that probably in July, we will come to the name. Obviously, I'll talk to each of you individually and the ones who are not here well before then. But just wanted you to know kind of that timeframe. What I would like to do is name a person before the big career tech teachers conference, which is at the end of July, August timeframe. Because I think it would just, you'll, you know, just kind of smooth the waters. People know that there's somebody in place, even though I have all the confidence in the world that between Ms. Morrison and that team, they'll be able to keep things going. Dr. Hall is still with us. He's technically not leaving for a couple more weeks, but he's, you know, he's in that transition period, too. So she's already taken over a lot of that load and done a very good job of it. So that's that. Libraries. You know that a couple of years ago, or maybe a year and a half ago, we, we did not bring the li- we had library standards, we discussed on a work session, we did not bring them for a vote. Ms. Manning, who's unfortunately not here, but she knew, we talked about this, she knew I was gonna talk about this this afternoon. She's a former librarian and she's really, she spoke to the librarian association a few weeks ago or spoke to them and really wants us to come back to that. And that, remember, that's, was before she even came on the board. So I told her that we would. So here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna take, not write from scratch, but we have a good document in place, but it is ancient. She asked me to go back and read it, and I did, and like the technology piece, you know, it's over twenty years old. So the technology has changed a lot. And that's what she's hearing from librarians, having been a librarian, is this, just, you know, not wanting to get into any of the stuff that's being discussed out in the public right now about public libraries. But we just gotta update some of this stuff. Uh, we, you know, we don't, you, students don't need to bring their own floppy drives to the library anymore because they don't know what a floppy drive is. So, so, um, what we told her is we're gonna take what we have, we're gonna make recommendations for amendments and bring that back to the board. I want you to know that work's gonna start. And if you know librarians, this is the important part, if you know a librarian in your district, because we want at least one librarian per district. We already have a couple of names that have been floated internally, you know, here, oh, here's a good librarian here. But if you know a librarian who would like to serve, please forward their name to Chuck Markham at, you know, in the next couple of weeks. And we're probably, they're probably ongoing meet a couple of times. Our plan is that we get them together over the summer once or twice, because again, we're not talking about starting from scratch. We're talking, and, and then bring back a revised document, maybe in August work session, maybe September work session, but in that timeframe to you. And I think Ms. Manning would like to serve as the board member on it, you know, so she's been a librarian, but she's, of course, very interested in it. So if you've got ideas of people, would you please pass that on to, to Mr. Markham? And then just, I wouldn't say go back and look, dig up your old, that version, because we're just so far away from that. I think that would not even do you any good. Just, we'll, um, we're just gonna go back to the original and then see what tweaks and we're done to update that. There'll be no links to the National Libraries Association or whatever in it, well, that's for sure, so. It was gonna be Alabama document. Okay, FAFSA. Promise these six will be quick, so. Oregon, so FAFSA is kind of a mess, and I think if you've watched the news, you know that. They went to a new form this year that was supposed to be faster and easier, and it didn't work when it was launched. And then they fixed it and it still didn't work. And so we have lower, much lower participation rate. Fortunately, you're, the way you wrote the rule, principals can simply waive it. So unlike Louisiana, which was in a crisis, what I was talking about, they actually, the way their rule was written, they had students that were not gonna be able to graduate because the federal portal didn't work. And so they had to do, reverse their rule and all that. We don't have to do that, but we're gonna have a lot more principal waivers this year than we've had the last few years. Just know that. Our numbers are gonna be down. We are working to try to increase them toward the end of school, because we do have students who tried, it didn't work, they tried again, it didn't work, and now they've just given up. But they do qualify for some federal money, so we want them to go back and try it a third time to see if they qualify for money. We do not wanna hang over your head, if you don't do this, we're not gonna let you graduate, that's foolish. So we're working on it, but at the same time, I want you to know, I'm not even gonna try to sit here and say, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna have, we're gonna go to ninety percent or whatever. We're not gonna put that pressure on our students or our parents, our numbers will be down this year. But hopefully they'll fix that portal next year. If they don't, we might be back with two of yous trying to say, well, we're gonna have to adjust this. But it is, the numbers have ticked up some recently. We know there's another problem. So we can look at our data in Power School. We know there are students that have completed it, but they're not showing up in the federal portal. And we can't do anything, you know, the federal portal's the one that counts and, you know, and, but we can't do anything about that. Our students have done their part, their parents have done their part, federal portal's not showing. So I can't do anything about that. So even the numbers you see reported in the paper are not accurate. We know our completion rates are higher than what's reported, but.
It's just not showing up.
It's just not showing up. So we'll, you know, we're gonna do our part, but just, so if you hear anybody panicking in the next few days that, oh, I'm not gonna be able to graduate because this, I keep hitting the button and it won't submit, that will not be the case, we're not sure that doesn't happen. That would be a problem, we would all get lots of calls on.
Well, I don't mind the calls, because I just say, well, you don't, you can't get a waiver.
Yes.
Usually it's a legitimate call.
Yes.
If they, if they know to call me.
Yeah.
But.
So we'll have more waivers this year, but that'll be fine. Principals, principals are aware.
Let them just sign it.
We have any issues, we'll keep working with them. The, um, so the other thing I wanted to mention to you, the foundation program. And I know it's getting late and oh my gosh, we won't talk about the foundation program at the end of the meeting. But as you know, the legislature's passed a joint resolution to look at rewriting the foundation program. It is, it's an interesting resolution to say the least, because it's the only commission I've ever seen that doesn't appoint any commissioners. So the only people on the study group are the legislature themselves, not part of them, all of them. So they just appointed themselves to do a study. The, and the study is due to be back next year, February first, three days before they go into session.
It's already written.
So. So we, um, you know, there's been a lot of talk about this. I think I've said some of this to, I've put some of this in writing to you. There was a big study done, I have a copy upstairs in a three ring binder. I pulled it out and gone, I, I read it the first time, I think it was in twenty thirteen, that Ogden, Blake and Pellet did. And it's, that's a big company out of Denver and they do a lot of the school, uh, school funding work. They used to do most all of it, but one of them's deceased now, they don't do as much of it. But anyway, we got that study. There's, A plus did, hired a group of consultants last year, did another study that's been very public. We, Dr. Payne and I met with their consultants back in December and, you know, got their result. And it was very similar to the Ogden, Blake and Pellet study. I mean, it's, there's only so many ways you do school funding. But, but I wanna take a minute and kind of explain our program versus a true foundation program, if I may. So we call our program the foundation program, it's passed in ninety-five. It replaced what was called the minimum program, which was passed in nineteen thirty-five. So we had the same program for a long, long, long time. And then in ninety-five, out of some, there were some threats of litigation, there were issues going on. Was some litigation, but it's never settled, so they passed the foundation program. It's a misnomer, because what we have is not a true foundation program. If you talk to somebody like Ogden, Blake and Pellet, they'll tell you what we have is called a hybrid program. It's a hybrid program because our system is based on teacher units. So we figure out how many students there are in first grade, we divide it by a number, which we call divisors, and then we get a number of units. And those units aren't everything. You get, you, you get what you get based on the number of units that you earn, basically teacher units. There's a weight, there's a built-in weight for special ed, there's a built-in weight for career tech, but you don't get extra for career tech or special ed, there's just, the units are what the units are. And then other things are built on top of that. So school nurse program is not part of the foundation program, it's additional. Transportation, in every state I've looked at, transportation's its own program, it's never in the foundation. But we have a hybrid foundation program based on units. A true foundation program, you don't have divisors. You have, you take a student, and I'll just make something up, an average student, if there is such a thing, gets a one. So whatever that number is assigned, and I'll go to a number in a minute. So I, I'm just an average student, I'm not gifted, I don't qualify for special needs, I'm not an English language learner, I don't live in a rural community, I don't have any special categories. So I get a one. And that one may be a certain number. In Tennessee, it's about seven thousand dollars, I think it's a one. Okay, then for every student who has a weight, so let's say I am an English language learner, then the weight for that might be point one five. And so now instead of a one, I'm a one point one five. And I might be autistic and that, and the weight for autism might be a point two five, so now I'm a one point four. And I'm, uh, I live in a rural county. And in Tennessee, they have a rural county weight and that might be point one, so now I'm a one point five. And my parents qualify for Medicaid and that gets another point two, and so now I'm a one point seven. And so then Dr. Payne's over there, he's gifted. He didn't have anything special in his life, except he's gifted and a gifted weight might be point one five. And so he's a one point one five, I'm a one point seven. Ms. Martin, I'll pick on her, she's a one point three five. And then you add up all the students in the school, multiply it by, so if it, if your base is seven thousand, seven thousand, and that's how much money the district gets to run the school. This legislature doesn't tell them, I mean, you don't earn teacher units, you don't earn school nurses, you don't earn principals, this is based on the weight of your student need, this is how much money you get. Now educate those kids. That's a very different way of thinking than what we, we've thought about for nineteen years in this state. Obviously, you can go in, in between. So Tennessee is the most recent state that's converted to a, a true, a more true foundation program. There are a lot of states that do it that way and their weights are all different. So, so in some states, special ed is special ed and there's a special ed weight. But in other states, and I would prefer this if we ever do it, special ed is broken down into individual categories. So here, an impaired weight is different from an autism weight, from a learning disability weight, from a dyslexia weight. But you can see how a student who might have multiple, multiple interferences could even get double or be worth double. Nothing says you have to spend that money, that fourteen thousand dollars on that student. It's just how the school earns its base money.
And they're still working through that. Having lived through all of the things you just mentioned, the lawsuit actually was, um, was unsuccessful. That was, you know, they called Reese's Pieces when they tried to put it in legislation. They divided it up instead of having a big blueprint. But the bottom line is that from a legislative standpoint and from a reality standpoint, that was one of the flaws in that, because Yvette and I were here when they presented it the last time. But there are some issues even in Tennessee.
Oh, absolutely.
Where they're having to deal with it because parents, for one thing, and even teachers are thinking through, you know, one child is worth more than another child. And then the other issue is the class size issue, where they've done some similar funding in areas like Minnesota. Not exactly the same, because they're all different. But now that their class sizes have, have reached the point where, in some cases, it's unmanageable, depending on where they're located. So that's the difficulty in coming up with the quote perfect, that real foundation program is, the other part of it is the potential for fraud and how do you wait children and what happens when they transfer? If it's, if it's done based for that year versus the year before and then they're, you know, they've moved out of state or whatever. There are a lot of complications in that. And even the group from Denver said that.
They're, absolutely.
You know, that's the problem that you have when you start looking at school funding. It's not a perfect, um, answer, there's no perfect answer. And the courts in this case decided that it was impossible for them to help.
Right.
But you recall probably, you were still in the classroom at that time, but I was here.
Sure was.
And, and I, in the midst of that battle.
As a student.
In the legislature, yeah, I was just in kindergarten, but, um, I don't believe that part. But that's the problem with the funding. And I look at this and I'm thinking, I, I saw the gambling proposals, I saw the lottery proposals. I mean, we could go down a long list of the potential for more problems and that's where we have to be really careful with school funding.
Yes, sir. And so another thing that we have to be, and I just felt, I felt like it's important that I kind of discuss this with you because I know they're gonna be having these discussions. And I don't want you reading things in the paper that we haven't even talked about. Not trying to obviously go through everything historically or what other states do. But we'll start sharing more articles with you and looking. But there's also, so there's, so there's the foundation program and then there's another big word, adequacy.
And that's, that was nineteen ninety-four, ninety-three, yeah.
Yeah, so when Pellet and Ogden, Blake and Pellet did their study, again, about ten years ago, I think eleven years ago. They said to convert to a new student weighted formula. At that time, we would need to raise one point five billion dollars in new taxes. That's not new taxes that for higher ed and all that, for the whole ATF, that's just for K-12. No early childhood, no, no expansion of two-year college system, just for K-12, you need one point five billion new dollars. That seemed to kill them. But, but so the, the issue is, once you apply multipliers and you decide what the multipliers are, and then if a child comes up and they're a one point eight five, then if the legislature only says, well, we only have enough money to fund them as a one point two. So now you've, you're, that, and that's one of the complications, don't, Ms. Bell, I think that Tennessee's running into now is, you have to, once you figure out this thing, you have to fund it. Um, and it did cause some, some funding increases in Tennessee. Of course, I'm not against better funding for our schools, but here's the, the, here's the real problem. If you come up with a new system and you don't raise the money to fund the system, then what you have to do is deal the money from another school system and you have to, you're basically re, you're redistributing money. So you're saying, well, we're gonna give, you know, we're gonna fund this school because they have all these needs based on child multipliers. We're gonna take that money from another school that has fewer needs. And that always causes problems too. So even when the foundation program we have came in, they had to do a whole harmless for a number of years to say that schools, you know, the schools that didn't qualify for as much money anymore. And I worked in one of those at the time, but that there was a, there was a floor, you won't get less money in ninety-six than you got in ninety-five, or in ninety-seven than you got in ninety-five. And of course, within just the growth in the trust fund, eventually that whole harmless went away. But, but that's complex, it's very complex. I'm not saying that they're gonna raise taxes, I'm not saying they're gonna do this or do that. But, but we, it doesn't do any good to shift the chairs around on the deck if we say, well, we're gonna have a different way of calculating, but in the end, nobody gets any more money than what they get today. So if everybody's getting the same amount of money, it didn't do what a foundation program's supposed to do, which is pay based on student need. And that's just, it's very complex. We want, obviously, you know, we're, we wanna make sure that we're at the table, not just running reports and sending them across the street, like they need to. And, and I have had, uh, let me, I wanna give a lot of credit to the governor's office on this. Well, for one over here, but also the, the budget office. They want to also make sure that if there's, this discussion's gonna go on, that we and they are included in the back and forth about, well, what does this mean? How, what does this look like when it's applied, not just formulate it.
But part of, part of that whole picture though is the difference between the way that education is funded in Alabama versus other states where they have more of a balance. There's not as much coming from the state level, we're basically a state funded.
It's true.
But the controls from the state level have been taken away. And yet you have some changes that have been made at the local level because they're required to, to meet a certain minimum, but that still didn't take care of. The problem as far as some of the issues that they were looking at trying to address, the biggest, is it going to be, first of all, you have to have people who understand the concept. And the disparity in the potential for fraud, frankly, is there when you start waiting people. You know, they, they do it according to, well, with sports in the Alabama High School Athletic Association, based on private versus public schools and whether you've won a championship that year. And it's created a lot of division within that organization, within, you know, the schools involved. But, and a lot of those schools have left, but, you know, then some have joined. But the fact is that with funding and money, in essence, you'll have to raise some more money. And we've seen what happened there, where people who would be losing money were being asked to fund,
Right.
you know, other schools. And so until you really look at the overall picture, which that's one weakness in that before, is that you can't compare state funding. I mean, you could look at Florida and see what they're doing with their resources and the way that they fund schools, it's different. But Tennessee is new and I'm, I have.
They are.
My parents are from Tennessee, I have a lot of family and friends, and it's not ideal. I have friends that have a really big connection with the legislature there. It's, it's not working well. And I think that's the other thing, is sometimes it's best to let them fail before we also fail.
Yeah, and I just wanna make clear, I'm not advocating for any change or not change.
I understand.
I'm just saying, we wanna be at the table in the discussions, but I don't want you to, I think there's gonna be more and more in the news about it and I don't want the board reading about things and saying, well, why is Dr. Mackie not even talking about?
No, they've been sending us information, email, the, the groups pushing this have actually included board members, at least I've been, you have too.
Dr. Maggie, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
I understand equity and versus equality issues in a number of aspects of our society. But in the computation, do they count supplemental funds from the federal government intended specifically to deal with these variances in the population? Because I know even in Limestone County, they have four different systems, four different attitudes, many variances even within the counties, plus difference between Jackson County and Madison. So I understand the whole difference and some will vote for taxes and some will not. But do they actually count for, because one of the data points that I've gathered is what the total expenditures per student, per school system are. And when you add in some of the other funding sources, it, it looks different.
The Tennessee model does not include like federal funding. Now, I can't speak to what Alabama's proposed model, the legislature.
We don't know.
But the Tennessee, we do not include federal funding and the Tennessee model does not.
But with our current program, it, we don't put it in the formula. But it does impact when you take the data of expenditures per student. When you, when you take, when I've asked for data from all sources for a reason, because I specifically look at what you spend per child in other districts. And it shows when you, when we, you, when you rank them on per pupil expenditures, when you add all fund sources, and it changes.
Right. And we do.
And all that data is what we make that data about.
Our, we do, yes, sir. We, so our equity, the equity part of our formula is based on locally, the value of local property tax millage. And I think y'all probably all know that, not how many meals they collect, but the value of one meal. And so, um, I don't even know what it is now, but we run the millage report. And so, um, I don't even know what it is now, but we run the millage report every year. And like at one point, I can remember the value of one meal in one county was $40,000, and the value of a meal in another county might be $750,000. Those counties that have. Those counties that have the higher value typically have more dense population, and they have more businesses and higher, um, higher valued property. And that's why the formula works on the value of a meal. Because the lower valued property is generally rural property where there's not, you know, a lot of timber. There're not a lot of businesses. And so the value comes down. There are places where it kind of looks a little upside down. Birmingham City is the number one example because the property, the value of a meal in Birmingham City is really high because it's a great place, you know, to do business. There are huge, very valuable buildings downtown. But the majority of their students are very high poverty. So it is a place where you have high property value, but low income students. So it's the, it's, it's our best example of what's actually upside down. They have high property values for low, for high poverty students. So in most other places, it's, you know, the higher property rates or higher property values generally mean it's a higher income community, lower property values, a lower income community. Again, Birmingham City, that's not true. And then there are, there are all kinds of issues with, with, uh, property calculations. You know, Sutter County, Lord knows, I've spent a lot of time on Sutter County. One of, some of the nicest property in Sutter County is the University of West Alabama, which of course doesn't count on the tax rolls because they're a public institution. So it actually, it kind of skews their, their millage report because some of the nicest property in town, most valuable property, is not actually on, it's not counted. It's not, I'm not saying that's a bad thing. It just skews the report. So Tennessee has a very different way of calculating the local match too. It's a very different way of calculating local match than what we have. Which is another thing the legislature might have to look at, is how is local match calculated? As you'll all remember, when the foundation program, the old minimum program required that every school system raised seven meals of property tax. And they went to the foundation program, they raised the requirement to 10 meals, but they didn't raise the taxes to match it. And so they allowed local communities to pledge other taxes. I'm telling you, their beer tax was pledged, um, local sales tax, they could tack, they could pledge another tax to meet the three meal requirement.
Because there was equivalents, 10 meal equivalents.
10 meal equivalency.
Which is what we loved, and she took it away.
Which made, yeah, well, well, that was very hard on the, um, some districts because it meant they had no, essentially, no local income. Because all of their local tax dollars were pledged to the 10 meal equivalent. So along came amendment, state amendment 777, I think it was. That said, every tax district in the whole state, city and county, shall levy 10 meals of tax, no matter what. Even if the local voters don't approve it, everybody gets 10 meals of tax. We are dealing with that right now in Choctaw County, where they had a tax fail. So their, their booked millage is now below 10 meals. But because of that amendment, the county commission must raise 10 meals of property tax for schools. And so then, so we've had to go through that. They're the, they're the only county right now we've had to do that with. Limestone, well, the same thing will happen if their millage doesn't pass again. So, so you have to have a minimum of 10 meals of actual property tax, not the 10 meal equivalency. One of the things that the Augenblick report recommended was raising the local equivalency to something. I don't remember what it was, but I think they actually did a chart. It was like 14 to 16 to 20, what it would look like. But, you know, that's another issue that will be out there. As it's, which has been said, it's complex.
And it's not a new issue. But if you can send everybody a copy of that report, I think that would be helpful just from a, from the historic standpoint of understanding where we've been. And, you know, I lived through it, so I can enrode about it, actually, some of it. But the bottom line is that it's better to understand it before we face it. And a lot of what we've been sending is basically a repeat of what we've dealt with before. The same, mostly the same organizations, the same organization leading the charge that led the charge back in the 1990s with Governor Folsom and, um, and that, that whole crowd. They lost, and then they went to, but they went to the courts as a part of hoping to win, and they lost in the courts and, and Jean Reese.
I don't know who that crowd is.
You know, you know.
Well.
I mean, we've all seen them.
It's out there, and we'll just. I would expect, I don't want to, I don't want to bore everybody, but I would expect we'll have other conversations about it because I think we want to, we want to stay apprised of what's going on. Senator Smithman announced on the Senate floor that the legislature will start, have its first meeting to consider whatever they're considering this month, in May. Don't know when that is, and we don't know who all will be in the meeting, but, but it's what he said. So evidently, there's a plan for something, uh, this month. So, and I'll follow up with him, and we'll, you know, we'll, we'll talk to him. We'll, we'll be there. We may be just listening, but, but anyway, I wanted you to know that. Again, just bringing back next Thursday afternoon, 2:30, we'll do a call. We'll do a, you know, Zoom-type meeting and give you the reading scores. And I think that, that's it. Thank you. Thank y'all for your, the extra time. I'm sorry about this. I knew that it's a longer list than I normally have, and it's just things I felt like I needed to talk to you about together.
I have one, one thing that I promised I would share with the board. I received a call, and you may have received calls, but I received a call from a very elderly teacher who taught in my community for a little over 30 years, or right at 30 years. She's in her late 80s right now. Um, and she called to share with me that, um, at the time that she retired, I think a couple of years after her retirement, there was a significant raise provided for retirees. But she and quite a few others did not fall in the window of being a recipient of any additional funds. And it's been a very, very long time that she has been retired. And she is living on around $30,000 of income. That's her retirement and her social security. And I raise this issue for you because she's now food insecure. And so, um, it's an embarrassment to me that we would have teachers who served faithfully in the classroom for that many years and achieved that, uh, level of, um, education and served as a role model to parents and to students in my community. Somebody that I personally know that would become food insecure because she's not received any type of increase as a retiree. And so I raise this issue because I know that I am just one voice, and there is not a thing in the world that I can do necessarily, except to make you aware when I receive phone calls. And it, it disturbed me then. It disturbed me enough that I called Dr. Mackey immediately and shared my concern. And of course, my community is, is able to help the elderly when they are in need. But for me to get a personal phone call saying, "We need help." And we felt like you're a state school board member, and maybe you could give voice to a very, very sad situation. And I happen to know that this person is not someone that would misspend her money. She is a very careful and faithful, uh, member of the community. And so I just raised this issue. If you speak to, uh, your delegation, your legislators, uh, would you please raise this issue? I think it is a shame on them, just absolutely shame on them or anyone that would not be thinking about our elderly at this time during this inflationary period when food, uh, when everything costs so much.
Ms. Rush, you're absolutely correct. And as a person that's been retired 25 years, and any raise that I've gotten to support myself during that whole 25 years has been not, almost nonexistent. And while we're seeing all the raises that were given for active teachers, there's almost been no consideration. And.
But when you look at.
And social security raises a lot more, a lot more than education. And it seems that the legislature is deaf to that issue. And maybe it's because there are SA bunnies in the retirement system are deaf, uh, would affect it. But we get no money, and we get insurance rates increases, and it's a negative income, literally a negative income every year. You're correct.
Well, I think the actions of those in leadership speak volumes about how they value people. And I believe it sends the message that those people are no longer valuable to us. So I think it is a, it is absolutely an important matter that leadership on both sides of the aisle should be taking up. Because how do you recruit people to go into a profession and spend their time and energy in the classroom? And then you send the message that you're not valuable once you leave the arena? It's just a really, it's the wrong message to send, and I don't mind saying it publicly.
I don't think anybody minds saying it publicly. I think the problem is that we don't control the, the first strings, and we don't have the authority to do anything from a financial standpoint. But perhaps some of the teachers' organizations would get involved, and I think that's, that, but I'm, I am aware of the pocket, and there was a pocket at the time when that happened. And then, and whatever, for whatever reason, it was, there was a cutoff. And basically, the others have now passed away. And so you do have a, I don't know how large the community is, but certainly their voice matters, and they probably vote.
Sure they do. And those numbers, we know those numbers. We know exactly who is 75 and older that, or 80 and older. We know that band of retired teachers. And, and it can't be so great a number that we couldn't provide something for them so that they do not become, as my friend's situation has become.
Well, and I think what you're saying is they have their time to talk, but we need to be out there supporting them. And absolutely. To say, as you say, we're trying to bring in new teachers this way. But when they see how we're treated after we leave, it's a definite disconnect. So I think I understand from where you're, you know, to where you're headed.
Yes, and, and please know, I'm not speaking on behalf of anyone on the board. This is simply me bringing you something that I think is important for the board to be in discussion when we are out.
I appreciate that. As a 77-year-old retired, I guarantee you're right.
Well, I know AERA and AEA just sponsored a big event, was it last month? As I actually went with them. And so we have organizations that are reaching out and expressing their concerns. But it is a slap in the face, as a retired educator myself. You know, how can we really recruit young people when they see what's, what's the advantage in staying in this career? So I think that we will have to continue to be a voice for those that, um, may not realize that they can speak. I think one of the things that impacted me the most when I was there at the State House was this, there was a person there that said her check was $700 a month. I mean, I just could not even imagine, you know? And so, um, we're sending a message. We're saying, on one hand, we want to recruit and retain quality educators. But on another hand, we're saying something totally opposite. And it was told to us that day that some of our legislators feel that we knew how much we were going to get when we retired. You know, and I won't say, but, you know, that speaks volumes. But I think that raising this issue is something that we need to definitely keep as a priority.
Anything else? Safe travels. 2:25, safe travels. We're adjourned.